Council meeting to order for June the 10th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Proten Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Chad, do you want me to go ahead and read the consent calendar? As if it's.
I was gonna say, sir, just, I was going to ask, and I know that I sent an email to the council a little bit earlier today. I would actually request that we pull all the items from the consent calendar in order to allow staff to do a presentation on each one. These are largely, these are components of the budget that we haven't spoke about yet. And so I think it would be just a good idea to be able to provide that depth brief overview to everyone without them being content with calendar items.
All right. Fine.
If it is the council's pleasure, I can just take them in order.
I'm good.
Okay.
Just by way of preamble, these first series of reports, A, B, C, and D, are all elements of the budget that will come before you on June 15th for your consideration. These items are not related to, well, aside from item C, are not related to the general fund, they are largely dealing with other funds such as Measure M, gas stacks, and those types of things, and how exactly we plan to deploy those funds in the coming months. These presentations were given to the Budget Standing Committee, and this, given the fact that we're having a meeting tonight, I felt that there was a great opportunity to allow the council to see this information prior to the 15th, and to allow staff, if there is any questions, to go back and research those prior to getting to the adoption or the consideration of adoption on 15th. The first is the seven-year capital improvement program. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Craig, and then we also have Chris on the line if there's any particular questions about the improvements themselves. Wendy, can you unmute Craig, please?
Okay, here we go. Mayor, council, and staff, first item up is the seven-year capital improvement program. By way of a little bit of background, budget workshops for the fiscal year 2020-21 were held with the Budget Standing Committee on March 23rd, also April 14th, May 6th, and May 13th. The primary focus of those meetings was a discussion of the city's operating budget. Today's workshop or meeting, this item, will focus on the city's capital improvement program. Some additional information, city's capital improvement program, or CIP, is a multi-year planning instrument that drives the evaluation identification of capital and infrastructure projects in need of renovation, repair, and/or construction. The CIP program document is different from the annual budget, as it sets forth a seven-year program. The first year's program contains projects that are included in the proposed annual operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The remaining six years reflect staff's recommended priorities for the future and are reviewed and revised annually by the city council. The presented for your consideration is the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020-21 through fiscal year 26 to 27. That's on attachment one. Chris Kelly, standing by, is city engineer, will present and discuss the seven-year CIP program in conjunction with the proposed projects for fiscal year 2021. Okay, Chris?
Hello, everyone, council members, city staff. This.
Council, in the interests of time, would you mind if I moved on to the next item and then we circle back to this one?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Council, the second item is number 3B, is the proposed budget for vehicle and equipment replacement. This is relatively straightforward. I will have Craig walk you through it very quickly, but essentially what it is, is that we will be carrying over some funding for vehicles that has already been approved or appropriated, and that there is no additional, or I'll call it new money, that is going into this account. With that, Craig, can you walk us through it very quickly?
Yes, thank you, Chad. Just by way of brief background, in 2013, the city council adopted a resolution, 2013-07, which is attachment one, defining the vehicle equipment replacement policy, setting forth replacements based on age, condition, maintenance, et cetera. During the months of April and May, the departments reviewed the inventory of vehicles and equipment, and based on this assessment, the results are reflected in the vehicle equipment replacement schedule, attachment two. Recommended is the following items to be replaced purchased for fiscal year 2021. Other police vehicles, the first one is a 2014 Dodge Charger. On the list, it's identified as unit 48-2. The mileage is at 63,000. The vehicle is currently inoperable. Basically, power steering is out. Suspension and rec opinion needs to be replaced. Estimated replacement or repair cost is approximately $10,000 for that. The estimated replacement cost is $39,000, and again, as mentioned, this is previously approved. Funds were carried over from fiscal year, actually, 1819. Second item is a 2013 Dodge Charger, identified as unit UM-1 Blue Charge. My mileage is at approximately $90,000. Estimated replacement cost is about $37,000. This clearly exceeds standard set according to policy. Again, this was previously approved. Funds were carried over fiscal year 1819. It is recommended that all their scheduled purchases, replacements for fiscal year 2021, be pushed back into the budget year. The two approved vehicles, also for code enforcement Charger, and the second one identified as Rec Van, were budgeted in the current fiscal year 2019-20. They're not reflected in the upcoming request for fiscal year 2021, as they are included as part of the enterprise lease program. An additional note, the code enforcement Dodge Charger is to be replaced by a Ford F-150. The two listed police vehicles were previously approved and funded in the year 2018-19. They were carried over to replace the similar outfitted Fords that the city is currently using for its safety fleet. Cost to replace the two police vehicles requested is approximately $76,000. Since the funding was carried over from fiscal year 2018-19, there's no fiscal impact to fiscal year 2021. If the police vehicles are replaced as recommended, they will be funded by Fund 50 Vehicle and Replacement Fund. With that, I would ask for any questions.
I did want to point out one thing that councilmember Hasselbrink brought up during the Budget Standing Committee meeting, which was a question about why the change of a code enforcement Charger or a car to a truck. Then the reasons for that is a couple. One, it's less expensive with regards to the lease program. Their F-150s, oddly enough, due to just the government rate that we're able to charge or that we're being charged, they're less. And then the other is more of a practicality type of issue. We are getting, you know, I think, related to COVID or not, more requests about items that have been dumped illegally, and having a vehicle that has more versatility, we can pick up things, throw it in the back of the truck, that seems to make a little bit more sense for our code enforcement team, given the limited number that we have out there to actually deploy. So it just seems like a good operational change, and oddly enough, saves us money at the same time. So that's the reason for the change there. And then I also will note that there was some funds, and we'll get into it a little bit later, with regards to purchases that were going to be funded out of the AQMD fund, which is obviously related to the reduction in vehicle trips, so vehicles that are electric or hybrids and such. I am pulling back a little bit on those, simply because I'm looking for some flexibility going forward with the use of AQMD funds, because I believe that there may be ways to use it in areas where we might get more bang for our buck, and be able to reduce, further reduce costs or strain on the general fund. We're currently looking into those, and again, will be something that I will bring forward to you in the next couple of months. And with that, if there's any questions about the vehicle replacements, there, obviously, like I said, these are all more housekeeping issues than anything else, but just wanted to have everybody have the opportunity to put eyeballs on them.
Okay.
And this is, I guess, related to the effect of COVID on rental car companies and leasing companies, enterprise specifically? These numbers been crunched with them lately? And if so, okay, but if not, I've been hearing that some people might be going out of business, and enterprise, if I understand, is not publicly held, so they don't have to divulge where they stand. But I'm just wondering if you've, like, reached out to them recently, like, okay, I need two cars, what do they go for right now?
So these are current numbers as of today. That being said, we will double check on all of these before we bring them back to you, but it's a very good point that not only enterprise, but Avis, budget, everybody is definitely in dire straits at the moment. And so whether or not we're able to either get a discount or ensuring the availability of these cars is important. That being said, we are in, I believe, and Ron, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're in year one of a multi-year contract with them. Is that correct?
You are correct, but I just want to caveat that we did start the contract with them last year, but we haven't received the vehicles yet. So that's something that we have to find out, is if it's gonna extend it even more, because again, I think we start the official contract once we get the vehicles in our hands.
Perfect. Okay, so, and so, Diane, thank you. That's why we're doing this, so that we make sure that we go and reach out, and we have all the answers before we get to the 15th. So thank you.
And Chad, you did confirm that we're not replacing with Chargers because of the idling issue, correct?
That is correct. Our intention is to go to SUVs on all of these models.
Just because it's a longer life, because the idle issue, they're hybrid-type things, so they, the engine shuts off?
Yes. There's been considerable issues with Chargers. They look very cool, though, so I will give them that. But they're obviously, I think, just given the versatility of the SUVs, I think that there's room for that, so.
Cool.
I have a question. The policy 2013-07, which is the guidelines on length of retention on the vehicles and so on, I'd like to have an opportunity, sunsets seven years ago at this point, that we adopted that policy. I'd like to have an opportunity to review that policy at some time in the future. It doesn't have to be before the budget, but at some time in the future, I'd like to take a look at that in terms of primarily who's being assigned vehicles, what the responsibilities of the vehicles are, and uses for the vehicles. So if we can schedule that after we do the budget at some time, I would appreciate it.
Sir, we're, it's kind of funny, Chelsea and I have a growing list of policies that we are going to be reviewing, and so this one makes the cut. Okay, well, this was a receiving file report, so if, hearing, no objections, we can, or, Wendy, I don't know if you need there to be a motion or.
If it's okay with the council, we'll just discuss each consent calendar item, and then do one motion at the end, receive and file all reports. I'm good.
So moving on to item 3C, this is the general fund budget gap measures, things that, obviously, we've presented to you in the past, both to the council as a whole and the Budget Standing Committee. We've gone back and looked at this again, tightened those numbers up, and are happy to report that, given the current status of where we believe the budget numbers are going to come out based on the projections from Beacon Economics and HDL, we believe that given all, if these actions were to be approved by the city council, that we would ultimately end the fiscal year with a balanced budget, which is, as you all know, no small feat. So with that, I'll hand it over to Craig to allow him to run through this quickly.
Sure, thank you, Chad. May have a bit of background to remind you, staff has been meeting with the Budget Standing Committee regularly to discuss closing the gap for the upcoming year. On May 18th, 2020, staff reported on the preliminary projected general fund budget for fiscal year 2020-21, which included an initial budget gap of $1,347,073. Staff also discussed at that time options, direction for closing the budget. Council, the proposed options include a number of items, including organizational restructuring of the development services and recreation departments, freezing a number of positions, and other cost savings. On page two is a summary of those items to run through quickly. Start with a budget deficit of shortfall of 1.3 million. The restructuring of the development services and recreation department has a net cost savings of $201,251. Frozen positions, including the police department, three corporals positions for approximately $587,000. Finance department is a one part-time position. Work's been reassigned to current staff. That's savings of approximately $67,000. City clerk's office, one part-time position. The work's been reassigned to workload to the two part-time receptionists. That's savings of approximately $23,400. Recreation department, there's three positions, a rec supervisor position is frozen. That's savings of approximately $117,000. Two additional part-time positions, additional savings of $48,000. In the public works department, eliminating the lead foreman position and reassigning the workload to one foreman position, that's a net savings of approximately $138,000. In development services department, elimination of the code enforcement officer, that's savings of approximately $86,000. Addition to that, there's furloughs for the non-safety and positions personnel, a 5% reduction for six months. That's the CEA group, Teamsters and Nonrepresented, that's estimated savings of $54,637. Addition to that, there's other salary savings, staggered hiring, for example, for estimated for the patrol, and one detective position, approximately one month, would save approximately $29,000. Part-time savings reduction approximately $10,000. All in all, the savings amount to $1,361,000, more than $97,000, $97. That closes the budget gap, and actually results in a small surplus of $14,524. As you know, as one of the components of the measures to close the gap are furloughs, which will be implemented July 1st, 2020, in connection with the agreed-upon terms of the furloughs. Management and nonrepresented employees will enter into side letter agreements. Teamsters has a similar side letter agreement. This results into a equivalent of a four, nine, and a half work schedule, basically nine and a half hours worked or paid for each signed four days per week. The city will also implementing a holiday closure effective December 28th through December 31st. Employees will not be scheduled to work on these days. City Hall will remain closed. Impacted employees may be listed in leave banks to receive compensation for these days. Both parties have agreed to meet and confer prior to the end of January 2021, at which time the city will reevaluate its financial situation and circumstances and confer about the agreed-upon furloughs upon agreement. Bargaining unit employees will shall convert to their pre-furlough period schedules and pay. There's maybe additional options and realistic scenarios that will close fiscal year 2021 gap, however, these seem to be the most available at this time, and are included in the fiscal year general fund budget for 2021. For the fiscal impact summary, the fiscal year 2021 preliminary budget presented an initial budget gap of $1,347,073. If the options discussed here in this report are approved, fiscal year 2021 general fund budget will be balanced. Ask for any questions.
So I might add, council, that obviously, I know that no one wants to see a reduction in staff, also, or the services that we provide. I believe that this is a workable way to get to a balanced budget. I do have concerns that, obviously, I will, you know, be sharing with council during the budget presentation about the sustainability, or how long the city would be able to run in this fashion. There is a, you know, obviously, anytime there's a reduction in staff, there is a commensurate reduction in our ability to respond to needs. And so, and especially given where exactly we are as a city, and trying to maintain, you know, a quality of life and such, I do have concerns about having this many reductions, especially given the fact that the city has done, I think, a great job over the years of containing costs, but when you start looking at the numbers that have been lost over just the last three years, in terms of the depletion of staff and the continuation of the work that needs to be done, the numbers are staggering. And I plan to bring those numbers and present them to the council on the 15th.
So on the 15th, there'll be what this looks like in real life as opposed to just on paper?
Exactly. So the presentation on the 15th will be a little bit, first, there'll be a presentation by each department highlighting what exactly goals, objectives, those kind of things, places that they will be spending their time, and what they'll be working on in the new year. And then I plan on discussing a city from a larger context, which is, again, this, what do these cuts really mean to us in terms of our ability to respond to needs out there in the city? And then also, I'd like to, again, paint more of a contextual picture of what the city has already done to get ourselves to this point. You know, you've enacted a number of cost-saving measures in the past, and I think that they were, they need to be talked about. Is there any questions from the council on this item, or we can move to the next?
Move on, please.
Okay, thanks, sir. The next item is 3D, the other funds budget update. Craig, again, I'll kick it over to you to quickly run through this. Council, just so you know, this is the largely just the areas that are not tied to the general fund, just the other funds that we obviously have at our disposal that we will deploy out there in the streets in meaningful ways. So with that, Craig?
Yes, thank you. Again, staff has been discussing with the Budget Standing Committee on fiscal 21 general fund revenues and closing the budget gap. Here is the review of the city's additional funds. The city has additionally nine special revenue funds, one debt service fund, four capital projects funds, and five internal service funds. These funds are just for review, a quick recap. These are not discussed in the CIP. Anything that was in the CIP is not in this report. Just real quickly, on page four is a recap of all these funds. It shows the projected fund balance as of July 1, 2020, the projected revenues for the new fiscal year 2021, the projected transfers and expenditures for 2021, and the projected ending balance as of June 30, 2021. There's notes at the bottom, some of these funds have transfers to the general fund, and some of the items, some of the funds have, include project funding that was carried over from 2019-20. For that, I would ask or seek any questions.
I do have one question. On the top of page three of four, on capital projects, particularly the park development fund, 40, it shows expenses for 2021 of roughly $250,000. What are we, I can't find that in the first item A. What is that, $250,000 projected for?
These represent projects that were previously approved and being carried over. As on page four, there's an asterisk to that effect that's reflecting that those are carried over projects that are going to be carried over to 2021, not new projects.
Okay, I understand it's a carryover, but what are we spending the $250,000 on?
Let me see real quick on there.
I can't find it in the capital improvement project.
Well, it wouldn't be listed in there, because those are only just for new projects. But in the proposed budget, 69, park development, these were all projects that were approved and budgeted in 2019-20, but have been carried forward to 2021. And that totals to $2,000,42,000. For example, it's like community center alarm doors, $60,000, that was not expended for, not spent in 2019-20, that's carried forward. Laurel Park restrooms, $30,000. Laurel Park fencing and mesh, $30,000. Laurel Park tennis court resurfacing, $40,000. Laurel Park ADA bleachers, $30,000. Stansberry Park turf renovation, $10,000. And Sroptomist Park turf renovation, $10,000.
Okay. That, will that be broken out in the report we get on the 15th?
Can be, but it's also detailed in the budget itself within that fund.
Given that, so councilmember Gross, given that it is the one, one of the lines that's showing an expenditure, I think that, you know, it's valid to break that out, to be able to highlight it a little bit. So we'll make sure that it is, so that people understand that this is money that's previously been allocated that potentially will be expended.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, if there are no other questions on these pieces, I'd like to actually circle back to 3A, simply because it's in line with kind of the current vein of discussion. This is the seven-year capital improvement project list. Obviously, Craig's already explained a little bit about what exactly that is, but if we can kick it to Chris to actually explain the actual projects, that would be helpful.
Away from his desk. Be right back.
Well, this never fails, clearly. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and circle back to 3E, which is, obviously, the council is aware that we have a number of funding sources that we are pursuing with regards to COVID-19, to ensure that we have adequate funds to first combat it, and then also to ensure that we're getting properly reimbursed. We are pursuing funding through FEMA, also through the Office of Emergency Services. Council's aware there will be an item later on today, which is related to CARES Act funding, and where exactly that money will be going and how we'll be using it. I was just made aware today that we will be receiving some additional funding from the county to use specifically for city-related expenses. And this item is tied directly to that, which is essentially a resolution of the city council to indicate our willingness, or the council's desire, to receive these funds and to go after them when available. So again, this is an item that allows us to, at the behest of the county, to access those funds when they become available. And I don't, so being that that one is fairly straightforward, I don't know if there's any questions on that, and if not, then we can circle back to 3A.
We need a motion on this one?
I think that we'll probably, as Wendy recommended, that we would basically take all these items and have them approved as a whole after they've been all been presented. With that, if I can go to item 3A, Craig obviously already explained what the capital improvement program was, seven years of CIP. We have Chris on the line to explain the actual projects themselves. So Chris, can you go run through them briefly for the council?
Chris, you are muted, and I'm not able to unmute you on my side.
There we go.
Chris, you're a little garbled. Chris?
Hold on a moment, I believe he's trying to call in. Hold on, let me mute. Go ahead and try again, Chris.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for that. I've been, I've been on video conferences all day, and this is the first time this has happened today, so I apologize. As we were discussing before, we have a, a seven-year CIP before you, and we have highlighted projects for the 2021 year, next year. At the top, we go through our regular yearly work. Portions of this are done by the Public Works Department, items such as tree trimmings, repairs to streets, cracks, you know, crack seals, potholes, that our Public Works crews would go out and use. We have also identified a, an item for the Serritos Avenue guardrail repair project. That was, that's an insurance claim, so that will be, that will not be a cost to the city, that will be recouped by the insurance company. We have a speed survey that we need to do. We have, we've proposed some traffic calming devices in the Old Town West neighborhood with lane narrowing. This is coming, this is stemming from our traffic commission meetings and direction from our traffic engineer. We have our SB1 project, which this year is going to be in the suburbia neighborhood. This will be a street improvement project. And we have some CDPG funding that will, that will take care of a street and apartment row, Howard from Reagan to Maple. And like was stated before, these are, these are all non-general fund projects coming from gas tax, SB1, and CDPG. If there's anything, any questions, I can address those.
On measure M money, page two of four, at the, at the bottom, we're talking replacement of, repairing and replacement of traffic signal heads and using LEDs. Is this the LEDs on the bulbs in the signals or in the pedestrian crossing?
This is item number five for $25,000. Replacement of overhead, I'm sorry.
Looking at page two of four, which is the, the breakdown, I'm not looking at the chart.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, can you give me a, the description?
Bottom of page two talks about measure M money. It does refer to the crack seals, potholes, tree planting, and it says replace safety lights in intersections with LED lights and maintaining and repairing the traffic signal head. The question was, are the LED lights going in the signals, the red, yellow, and, and green, or are these for pedestrian LEDs, pedestrian crossing?
I do not have a new item for street lights. We have a, we have a, we do not have any money budgeted, any new money budgeted for this particular item in the seven-year, in the, in next year's budget. I'm referring to, do you have the spreadsheet for the seven-year CIP?
Yes.
That, if, if you looked at line item seven, that, that is replace safety lights at intersection with LED lights. And I do, I do not have any money for that next year proposed.
Okay. What are, what are those? Are those the?
This would be to replace the lights on the signal heads if, if they are damaged, because those are not Edison lights. All the other pedestrian lights along the sidewalks are Edison lights.
Sure. Just so I can clarify, the, the items that we're talking about are the red, white, I'm sorry, the red, yellow, and green portion of the lights, not a crosswalk lights or a, some kind of safety lighting. I think that's the question. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, and, and I, I would, this is an item that I checked in with our previous city engineer, our traffic engineer, and they said that if we have to cut, you know, if we, if we, if we have to cut an item, this would be an item to take out. Public Works did not have to replace any of the lights last year.
Right. Chris, some of the, and this is, again, the reason why we do this, this is an opportunity to clean up some of the language in here to make it a little clearer when it goes back to the council. So why don't we maybe try to highlight what exactly is meant by each one of those, and then we can be in a position to move forward?
Yeah, I can work with Chris. I'll clarify that language for you guys.
That, that's fine, it just, I wasn't sure if we were replacing the pedestrian crossings. I saw something regarding Florista and Los Alamos Boulevard, where we were replacing, I guess, the pedestrian crossing signals with, for the blind?
Yes.
So I wasn't sure if that's the same thing or not.
No, that's a different, that's a specific project that is to address issues with the visually impaired, so that this would be more of a sound enhancement for Florista and Los Alamos.
Okay.
And not a light enhancement.
I know there's one at, at Sausalito and Brighamon Way that's, that's done that way, because the signal chirps, letting you know it's clear across the street.
With audio?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I think if there are no other questions, Wendy, you wanted to take this as a, as a grouping, is that correct?
Yes, if I can get a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar items.
I will motion.
I'll move to receive and file.
Motion by Councilmember Doby, seconded by Councilmember Gross. Do roll call. Mayor Murphy?
No.
Mayor Protem Chirco?
Yes.
Councilmember Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselberry?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Okay, if it pleases the council, I can move on to item 4A.
Please do.
Sir, the item before you and the, the jumping off point for this particular meeting is the emergency relief for small business grant program. Ron is, has been working very closely with SBDC in order to put ourselves in a position to be able to administer these funds and get them out the door quickly. Obviously, this was money that was able to, we were able to get from the county as part of the CARES Act. We are now ready to implement the program, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ron to kind of give you kind of a overview of what exactly it is, and kind of how we think we can do some good.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Like Chet said, we've been working with the Small Business Development Center, so we have two representatives tonight that's joined in on the meeting. Do you have Mike Daniels? And I'm sorry if I mispronounce her name, but it's Manal Recha, right? So the COVID-19 pandemic that we're experiencing has brought some burden on the local businesses, and not just in Los Alamos, but of course statewide and nationwide. But here in Los Alamos, we roughly have about 1,100 business, businesses, and a lot of them have been affected. And the city has done its best during these times to provide information about other assistance programs, such as the paycheck protection program or the emergency injury disaster loan. But sometimes these aren't really helpful or address the needs of a small business in Los Alamos for a lot of different reasons. So I think it's a great thing that we can go around and help the local businesses in Los Alamos with this emergency relief grant program. So the emergency, if the council decides to proceed with the emergency grant relief program, there is a process that will go about it. So right now, city staff and SBDC are working together to finalize the document, documents. But once we get approval from council, we'll push out the marketing of this program to our local businesses, and there's a variety of ways we can do that. We could do an email blast with, when you, when a city, when a business does apply for a business license, they have to put an email address. So we have all those email addresses in our possession. We also have our website, of course, and our social media, and I contacted the Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce, and they will be assisting us with pushing out information about this program as well. So once we push out that program, then there's a timeline where we're going to come in and businesses can fill out the application and submit their interest in the program, and then they have to start working on the requirement and the paperwork. And then depending on how many we get in, you know, there's a possibility of having a lottery, because there's a lot of people. We're only offering unfortunately just 35 grants in a sum of 7,500 apiece, or also, so 35 grants at 7,500 each. And if we go over to 35, where we have more interested businesses, then we go into a lottery program. And then once we go through the lottery, SBDC here will make sure that all the requirements are checked, presented to the city for final approval, and then we will cut the check out to the businesses in two installments, one 50% at the beginning, and then four weeks later, 50% at the, four weeks later, like I, I said. All right, some of the eligibility that we are proposing, and again, in consultation with the SBDC and kind of looking at what other cities have done, SBDC has partnered with local cities around us, such as Buena Park, but these are the criteria that we are proposing. The grant is for profit businesses, that is, I mean, for-profit businesses located in the city of Los Alamos. Business that is not a sole proprietor or independent contractor, they have to have a minimum of one W2 employee. Businesses with 25 or less employees, including the owner, that, that business must be located in a commercial or industrial space, so it can't be a at-home business. Business must have an active business license in Los Alamos and be in good standing with the city for a minimum of 12 months. Business cannot receive some of the assistance that I mentioned before, the economic injury disaster loan or paycheck protection program. And again, I want to add that 7,500 is the grant that is allocated with 50% upfront and the balance distributed four weeks later. The money is aimed for small businesses to assist them in paying rent, accounts payable, payroll, utilities, insurance, and purchasing of protective, personal protective equipment, PPE, to assist with them reopening. The funds are not intended to be used for working capital or lost salary or lost revenue. And again, the goal of the program, the emergency relief grant program, is to support the reopening and potential growth of the business when the economy restarts. Okay? Again, the city has received about 200, approximately $270,000, $271,000 from the CARES Act, and with the 7,500 grant for 35, and there is a fee that SBDC is charging for the city that it will come up to a total of 270, 270,575, so it will fall underneath the money that we entered. Now, the reason why we reached out to SBDC to assist the city is because we just don't have the staff resources to implement this program. And so SBDC will assist us in terms of pushing out the program, checking all the requirements, and then following through with all, all the businesses out there, because we have a whole timeline of pushing it out that includes a webinar. They do sit down one-on-one with each of 35 business recipients of the grant to go over their paperwork. And again, city staff, we just don't have the resources to do that. I'm here, I brought in Michelle, our analyst, to answer any question. Leslie's here as well to answer any question. And like I mentioned, we have two representatives on SBDC to answer questions as well.
Ron, I do have some questions. I'll kick it off just because I've been so intimately involved with my own company doing some of this, and it's mainly just for clarifications for the eligibility. So it's for-profit businesses located within the city of Los Alamos, but the fourth corner doesn't count, obviously, even though they're probably going to try and apply just because. So when we get an application, do we first check to make sure that they have a business license with our city?
Yes, that's one other requirement, that you have to have a business license with Los Alamos for a minimum of 12 months or one year, correct?
Another one was, can they be a publicly traded company and apply?
I'm going to ask if Mike can assist me with answering that question?
Sure.
Let me, let me do a, because, why I'm asking this is, and this happened with the PPP a lot, is somebody like a Wahoos by itself in Los Alamos would be considered a small business because they're under 25 employees, but that's a huge corporation, so, you know, what, what trumps what?
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of parameters to put in place here. You know, I mean, you could say no, I mean, some cities have said no franchise. Yeah, and there's a lot of parameters to put in place here. You know, I mean, you could say no, I mean, some cities have no franchises. You could definitely say no publicly traded companies, that's a very common piece in there. You could also do by revenue size. Just know that the more parameters that you put into place, the more criteria it takes to make sure that you're checking it off, so you might need different documents that take time for people to get and to access. But it's very open to, you know, as long as it follows the CARES Act requirements, which are really small businesses. And some of the things that Ron had said, you know, I mean, you could, there are some people that are doing nonprofits as well. I think that's an interesting way to go about it, and probably not what you guys want to do with only having thirty-five. But, you know, making sure that you have one, that's definitely something that you can discuss and, you know, we need the requirement that you want.
Yeah, and I think one of the things, I mean, we truly want to hit, you know, the dance studios and the little gyms that don't have, you know, nonprofits. They can raise money through their fundraising, which that's how they normally do that. You know, publicly held companies, they have their stock, you know, their stockholders. So I just want to make sure that we're laying this out, so if a Wahoo comes in, we don't all of a sudden say, oh, well, you don't qualify. And it's not according to this list, they do. The Wahoo in Los Alamos, or even the McDonald's per se. And I know that that got stung with the PPP with, you know, the Lakers getting money and the Shake Shack and Ruth Chris because for that exact reason that it wasn't clarified in there about you can't be part of a chain, what's the chain size? Would Mamas qualify? Because Mamas has three locations, you know, what, kind of narrowing down that so we don't have to come back and say, oh, yeah, you really don't qualify. The other question that I had was, why are we not allowing sole proprietors to apply, but a partnership could apply based on this list? Or an LLC could apply, you know, what's the intent of not letting? If it's, if the company is a sole proprietorship and they have five employees, why would that disqualify them simply because of their business status?
Well, we tried to keep, again, we have a limited number of grants that we're going to be able to process out, we only have thirty-five. And we're trying to keep that businesses that are actually in a commercial space or industrial space. A lot of times when you're a sole proprietor, you get to work for instance at a home. And we're just trying to keep, I think, that's just the image that we don't want to have empty retail space or industrial space in the city. So we're trying to help those type of businesses.
Right, and I understand that, and we have that in there, that they have to be in the industrial or commercial space. But I just don't understand why, as a sole proprietor, that would disqualify them, but if you're a partnership, you could. You know, it's basically how they felt out their business entity, you know, like a Griffin's Grill is not a corporation, and I don't know that, I'm just pulling through. A Griffin's Grill is not a corporation, they're a sole proprietorship, so they wouldn't qualify. But a Mama's, because they're not a sole proprietorship, would qualify, and the only difference is how they file their business.
Okay. No, again, these eligibilities, we can revise them, and that's why we bring it to council for your feedback. So that's something that we can definitely discuss with SBDC about clearing up the language to add that type of business.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our intent is absolutely perfect, we're really trying to help the hardest businesses like the dance studios. Well, there's probably a dance studio that's a sole proprietorship, and we just disqualified them. And, but they really need it, and they qualify under every other thing, and they should be one of the first people because they're sole proprietorships. Now we just disqualified them, so I just want to make sure that we're truly getting to the businesses that really need it.
Okay, no, yes, we'll look into that.
Okay, and also, one of the disqualifications is, they can't have received anything from the PPP. How do we know if they've gotten anything? It's the honor system?
Mike, do you have a way to look into that?
So it is a self-certification, and then we're also collecting two months or the previous couple of months of their business bank account, so we should be able to see it. You're absolutely right, they might have three different bank accounts, right? So we're not checking.
A lot of companies have been advised, we didn't do it when we got our PPP, but a lot of companies have been advised to open up a additional just for the PPP money. So, you know, and I'm not saying that businesses are dishonest, but businesses are desperate right now, and if they see seventy-five hundred dollars and all they have to do is say, no, we didn't get the PPP. You know, how do we make sure the bad actors aren't getting the money that isn't, they've already been subsidized on another program, which is a great program. Like I say, I'm just trying to make sure that the people that really need it are getting this.
Yeah, so it is a self-certification, and then the grant agreement itself will say, you will have to pay this back if you are caught. Now, the chance of getting, be very slim, right? It is there and documented a few different, a few different times in different ways, but you're absolutely right. Somebody could absolutely apply for this and have received PPP, right?
Okay, and we don't have any way of certifying them outside of just asking them in pinky swear that they're.
Right, a self-certification, a document that says that, yeah.
Okay.
I will point out to, to your point, Councilmember, that it is incredibly difficult. There is no centralized database to actually be able to go back and verify these things. At least within the timeframe that we're talking about actually putting out the money. Now, that all being said, part of the reason for using SBDC is to, knowing that this is going, this is federal money, and it is going to be audited. And so we want to be sure that we're obviously taking into account all of these different things, so that when we do go back through the audit process at the end of this, that we're able to show proper documentation and that we did take every step that we could take in order to verify the criteria that we're applying to everyone.
Okay, perfect. Because we're going to be the ones that are going to say, hey, you guys did your due diligence.
Can the self-certification include a statement that it's under the penalty of perjury? You're less likely to lie if you see that sort of language there.
We just launched City of Newport Beach's program, and that's exactly what it says.
Coming from an attorney, way to catch.
I got two, two questions, because Ms. Shelley picked the other two, thank you, ma'am. My first one is, is there a way to, because like Shelley was saying, with the businesses, some of them had to close. Now, there were some, like a McDonald's, they didn't have to close, they've been open this entire time. So is there a way to make the funds available for the businesses that have had to be closed this whole time?
In terms of making a requirement that, so, and I'm trying to frame it in a way that we might put it into our criteria, is that if the bill, if the business was deemed a non-essential business and was during that period of dying, is that kind of the way that you're?
Yes, like a preference given, and if that's not the right word, it might help, correct me? But a preference given to businesses that have had to be closed since March whatever, and so whenever their rollout is. Is there a way to do that?
So there, there is, you know, and I'll go back to just different programs that we're running. So like for Newport Beach, they really wanted to touch restaurant, retail, and professional services like nail salons, hair salons, gyms, for that exact purpose, right? They've been deemed non-essential, they've been closed for two, three, now maybe even going on four months. And so they wanted to try to help them first, so if there was enough of a pool of applicants for that, they would go to that first. And if there wasn't, then it would open up to others, but they wanted to touch that first. You absolutely could say, if your business has been deemed non-essential, that is first priority, and if we have enough people, we stop there. And then if we don't, and maybe there's twenty people that fit that category, and then the other twelve people or fifteen people then would go into a lottery system based on however many applications. There's a lot of different ways you can kind of cut this up. It's just, anytime you do that, you know, you're cutting off and excluding some portion, and somebody's going to be upset, as you guys already know. But, no, I know, I get you, I just want to make sure you've kind of thought through all the scenarios.
Maybe I'm always making somebody. First issue? And then the other one is, why no door to low sow businesses? What was the thought behind that?
Sorry, can you repeat?
Why said that they have to have had a business in Los Allo for the last twelve months? So that excludes any core businesses? And I'm just thinking about like the people that I went to ribbon cutting store, I don't think they've been able to be open. Was there a reason that we are kind of excluding people that just got here?
Yeah, so the grant money is money for businesses that, and they recommend to give it to businesses that are quote "successful." And so we don't know what that means, successful, so you know, we just said, you know, a business that's, that has a business license for a year or more. Now, again, that's open for discussion because there are cities out there that do six months. I think Mike can correct me, I think I just saw one recently that was a three months of business license requirement. So again, we just kind of followed in what the majority of other entities are doing around Los Alamos. And a lot of the requirement that we followed is just again what the majority are doing. But again, that's why we bring it to city council, it's for, it's open for discussion.
What about in business period for six months? Because some people were in business in another city, and then they came to Los Allo. And that might leave me a little salty, if I come to Los Allo to do business and then I get excluded from a program that should be able to benefit me as a, as a new business owner in my newfound home.
And again, as Ron mentioned, the very reason we're bringing it to you is.
Whoa, I love, this is awesome. I hope my tone today is awesomeness.
And just to give you, yeah.
This is, I love it.
And just to give you a little insight, some cities have gone with the six-month rule, and just keep in mind this money, the first test that somebody has to pass is that they've been affected by COVID-19 in their current location, right? So we kind of take that March first, I know it's really March twelfth, was kind of the area. So as long as it's before that and they can prove that in that location they've been affected by COVID, but they can also prove, you know, their sales are down, they've either been deemed non-essential or they've lost employees or had to lay off employees, that's really the test to get into this, that the federal government, the CARES Act requirements require.
Okay. Okay.
It could be six months instead.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on some of those other questions, please. First of all, on, just as a process question, on two E of the staff report, you say, "Applications are received on a first-come, first-served basis." If applications are oversubscribed, the lottery will take place to grant awards. Don't those two statements, aren't they in conflict? You're taking applications on a first-come, first-served basis, but yet in reality, you're waiting till it's all done to see how many applicants you have. You see my point, or am I completely off here?
No, I, Mayor, I believe you do have a point. I think the word, the way that, the reason that it's worded, the way that it's worded, is simply because we don't know, I guess, at this moment, how, if it's going to be oversubscribed or not. I believe it is, I think, Mike, you might be able to speak to that as well, that I think that there's going to be a significant amount of interest in this program. I mean, why wouldn't there be? That being said, I think, and again, Mike, I'm sorry if I'm stealing your thunder here, but I think we're going to find that as we go through the process and actually Mike and his team go through and verify some of the documentation and the criteria, that we're going to find a number of these businesses won't qualify for one reason or another, which is ultimately going to put a, so that may adjust whether or not we're oversubscribed or not. Mike, I'm sorry, I'm completely off base, or if that's kind of in line with the thinking?
Yeah, it was really a question, you know, some, some places have decided to go first-come, first-served. Some people would rather do it so that people aren't rushing to get their, get it at eight AM, and then just because my technology was as fast as yours, I don't qualify, or I'm not in the same queue. And as you looked at like the city of Los Angeles, the city of San Francisco, when they did theirs, they were oversubscribed in ten minutes, and they had like twenty thousand applications for five thousand. I mean, these people, just because their router wasn't quick enough, I mean, I guess, I'm a huge fan of, let's see, everybody that puts it in, and I know this is addressing your exact point, and then do a lottery system where it makes it as fair as possible for people, so that they don't have to, you know, rush to get it in at that exact moment, they can take their time to fill it out, do it correctly. So yeah, I mean, I think those two points might have been, those two points were put together and they probably shouldn't have been. It should have been either, we're going to do a first-come, first-served, or we're going to do, open it up for two days or three days and see how many people we have. And if we don't have a full subscription, then we'll just vet through those people if we do, which I'm sure you will with thirty-five. We put them into, you know, we put them into a lottery based on if they filled out that self-certifying application, correct?
Okay, so the seventy-five, the seventy-five hundred dollars is somewhat arbitrary, correct?
It is. But again, I'm sorry, Richard, just, just to follow up, it's, yes, I believe that it is somewhat arbitrary. There's going to, there are certain cities that are going to ten thousand, I've seen cities that are as low as five. Based on conversations with SBDC, with surrounding cities, there seemed to be kind of a sweet spot that would essentially provide a lifeline for about two months. But there, there, again, it's that the council's direction, whether or not there's a value in that number being higher or lower. Having a lower number obviously means more, more grants go out, so that obviously the ability to touch more businesses is important as well.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to propose that we do include sole proprietors. Especially in the non-essential businesses that actually have been hit the hardest. And if you're in the nail business and all that, you know, you still can't open up in some cases. And, but I would like to have a caveat in there that for sole proprietors, we, we give them half a grant. So if you, if you're a one-person business, you get three thousand, seven fifty, if we keep the number at seventy-five hundred. I also, if we do get more applicants than we have money for, I would rather give fifty applicants five thousand dollars than thirty-five applicants, seventy-five hundred dollars. I think we're helping more people that way. So I'd like to hear what my colleagues think of that, and I also think, Tanya's question, the six, six months to me is a good, a good timeframe to be in business, you know, in our city. So I would, I would push for six months on, on five, on eligibility.
Richard, I like your idea, I think for right now, can we, do we have to put a dollar amount, or can we do based on participation? So we can see, you know, we, we might get thirty-five at seventy-five hundred that are qualified and needed, and we might get more, but instead of locking ourselves in, you know, the grants could vary from three thousand to ten thousand, you know, kind of as a broad range. And then as the applicants come in and we decide how many really fit, who are trying to help, then we can determine the amount there, and then we're not locked into a dollar amount right now. Can we do that?
Yeah, that, that's, that's a great idea, leave it open with a range.
Right. I mean, Mike, is that what you're on, like three thousand to ten thousand, and then, you know, where we know kind of the sweet spot is seventy-five hundred, but that gives us some leeway to expand it more if we want?
I'd like to be transparent, so there are ways in cities that I've seen is, you know, there is a scale, so we could do it on employees. Like kind of Richard was mentioning, that if you have, you know, one, like two and under employees, you get X amount of money. If you have three to five employees, you get another X amount of money. You have, you know, six to ten employees, you know, six to fifteen employees, you get another amount. I think if we just leave it generalized, there's no transparency there about how much money we're pushing out.
We could do that, we just couldn't say then how many grants we're going to be awarding, which is fine.
Correct.
So Ken, I'll weigh in a little bit here. With eleven hundred business licenses issued, thirty-five people, thirty-five businesses, is going to happen very quickly. That's one point. The second point is that we've got this money, there's a possibility that more may come. But I think rather than sitting on this, trying to figure out what the most fair way is, we're not going to be able to take care of hardly anybody. And yet seventy-five hundred makes sense, having been in business and know what rents are and utility costs and things of that nature, which is what the grant is intended to qualify for. If we get this more complicated, does that mean that our agreement with SBE is going to change? Because they're taking about eight thousand dollars in administrative fees. If we make this more complicated, we may have less money actually going out to the businesses. So I think the simpler we can keep it, to try and serve the most that we can, is the better way to go.
No, I, can I, can I, I think that's a great point, because I think part of the fee there is, again, SBDC sits down with every applicant or every business that receives a grant, and that's a charge, so the quote that they gave us was for thirty-five. uh, the quote that they gave us was for thirty five businesses. So we move it up to fifty, then yes, I believe that, that, that monetary amount might be altered.
What if they don't sit down in person with them? Can there be a screening online or that, it doesn't matter? It's the contact that you pay for or the type of contact that's made?
Uh, and so we're basing this off of how long it takes to get all these documents per, per client. You know, so some clients are going to take us five, six, seven hours to go chase them down, get documentation of lease or tax, all things that you guys need to decide what we're collecting as far as documentation to support all these things. Some will have it in an hour. So we're just kind of giving you a rough, you know, two hours of cutting how much time we're going to spend. We're going to probably spend more. But we're trying to be as fair as we can as far as that fits.
Well, I understand that, but I'm, my, um, maybe my, I'm not clear. Let me clarify myself. I have small children. They eat my brain cells.
I do too. I understand.
Is it different if you don't have to take time to sit down and physically meet with them? Like I applied for um, some different grants and whatnot, and I didn't, I don't even think I talked on the phone to anyone. It was an email. And it was like, hey, you're missing this, or hey, you didn't make the cut. But it was, it was an email. So is it different? Is there a price difference? How you contact them? Or is it?
It does sound, yeah.
You know them. Okay.
Yeah, it's, you know, and there's also going to be a grant agreement. There's going to be W nine. There's going to be a webinar for them, for the winners. It's just time we know we're going to spend with each one.
And frankly, having an outside company do this uh, for transparency purposes, um, I think it's the better way to go.
And just so you guys, our SBDC program is a little odd and unique, but we are a federally funded program. We're funded by the SBA and we're actually Cal State Fullerton employees. Just so you're aware of who we are.
Y'all are tight.
You're saying you can do it for nothing because you can build a federal government?
I wish.
Yes, do we have a go on, on this? I've just, I've got another meeting I've got to get to. So do we have enough or what, what, what do you need from us?
With regards to this item, and I know the mayor made a, a number of suggestions, and maybe it might be a good place to start, just the, and Mayor, please forgive me if I, if I don't have these jotted down correctly. But to include, to remove the prohibition against sole proprietors, but that we would only allow for half of the grant amount, um, that we would change the requirement of 12 months to six months. Um, that we would, and I, I believe this was your intent, uh, that we would be instituting a lottery system and striking the first come, first served methodology. And that, um, essentially that there would be a, um, I'm sorry, a movement to the, instead of 7,500 to 5,000? Or that you wanted to do the sliding scale uh, based on employee count? That was the, the last one that I was not exactly clear on.
I, I, I really wasn't much for the, the employee count.
Okay.
But I, my, my thought was 5,000 if oversubscribed. You know, it, it, um, a- and one further suggestion. Um, the company was saying, SBDC was saying that part of the problem on their end is gathering all the materials. I, I, I've applied for many things, but it gave you a checklist and said failure to include all these items are an automatic dismissal. And that, that will, should eliminate a lot of the work of chasing this stuff down. If you don't, if you don't attach it when you apply, you're not getting considered.
Yeah. I mean, if I can speak up. Anybody's first uh, application for a grant, most people have already applied for something, so they should have most of this. I'd be surprised if it was someone's first application. So I can agree with uh, Mayor on that one. Have all your little duckies in a row.
Uh, as far as the sole proprietorship, I, I'm kind of in line with Richard. I mean, use of the grant is to, to pay rent, right? A lot of our sole proprietors are working from home. Um, which is, which is great, which is important as well, but they're not paying additional rent. Payroll is severely reduced. It's just that sole proprietor, utilities, insurance, all of that as well. So, you know, to give a sole proprietor that's working from home, $7,500.
Well, Mark, Mark, on the, on the qualifications right now, they have to be located in the commercial or industrial area. So they can't be working from home. And they have to have at least two W two employees. So the only difference is, is how they set up their business, whether it's a partnership or a sole proprietorship or an LLC or a corporation. Where, you know, that, that's what I'm worried about, about. There could be two dance studios, both have seven employees, one's a sole proprietorship, one's a corporation. Sole proprietorship doesn't qualify, but they're identical as far as how they operate in their expenses and everything else. That's what I want to make sure we, we level the playing field on.
Okay. Versus an independent contractor, which is more.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Shelley, you said two employees, correct?
Uh, I think, isn't it two employees or is it one W two employee?
One W two employee.
So I would probably, because the sole proprietorship could be his own one W two employee. So I would up that. Um, probably at, at least, I would say three because it's the, the owner. Cause you know, I, I mean, I, my owners are W two'd here, but they own the place. So I would do three W two employees because it'd be one, the owner and then two other employees or something like that.
Where, where, where in eligibility does the state have to have a W two employee? What number?
Uh, I thought it was on there.
No, it was not written in the staff report. Um, it was not written in the staff report, but it will go into the, um, when we push out the, um, the marketing for it, it will be in the guidelines.
Okay.
Well, if, if, if our goal is to help the nonessential people such as nail people and hairdressers with the smaller grants, they don't have any employees. They are their own business. Um, they are, we're going to eliminate them indirectly by doing that. So my question is, why do you have to have a W two employee? Can't you just have a Schedule C?
Well, the, the only thing we're trying to fit with the W two employee is to be able to include the sole proprietorship. But I think if we, if we have the sole proprietorship and they, they still have to be in, they can't be a home business, then I think that solves that problem.
Right, Shelley, but if I, if I, if I practice as a CPA and opened a store and had no employees, just did it all myself, then I, I don't qualify. Or if I'm, if I'm a hairdresser and I pay rent to have a space i- in this, in the correct area, I'm paying for a space, but I, I don't have employees, I don't qualify. I, I'm trying to get it so people qualify.
Mike, maybe I can ask a question just with regards to criteria in general. If you were to eliminate number two, uh, business is not a sole proprietor or an independent contractor, does that solve the vast majority of the issues?
Well, I mean, I think just from what I'm hearing from everybody, I think you could easily say sole props because I'm with the council members, you know, sole props are absolutely habitable at businesses. What you can make it is that a lease. So if you have a lease, then you know, therefore you have a business in a, you know, a commercial based business and then we're corridor, industrial corridor. I think that would solve. I think you guys might be trying to fight around a home-based or, you know, a single person and take a hair salon, right? So the hair salon owner probably has the lease, but might not even have an employee because they, they lease out each chair. They might not have any employees. And I think to everybody's point, I think just having that lease and then as you guys got down to the micro kind of the hairstylist that rents the chair that has a sublease, are you guys okay with a sub, a sublease? All you have to do is, you know, whatever requirements you create will follow. But just, I mean, I'd like, because you're thinking all the way through, you know, to, to some of the people, but I think the lease solves a lot of issues.
And, and I would doubt that those folks, Mayor, have individual business licenses. Um, if you're specifically looking at the nail salon and the, and the hairdressers, uh, they're renting a space, it's probably the main business that has the lease uh, has the business license. But I doubt, I doubt that those individuals do. Somebody from our business, uh, you know, community development uh, may be able to answer that question, but I, I would doubt they've got business licenses.
Yeah, they're 1099 employees. They get a 1099 form at the end of the year from the business.
Right.
If they're independent, they should have a business, they should have a separate business license. But you're right, they probably all don't.
Yeah.
I mean, the goal, the goal here is to help small businesses. I mean, individuals, it, it'd be great to help all the individuals who happen to be working in our city, but um, our goal is to, to help prop up small business right now, which employs individuals. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to open it up to, to anybody who happens to be working in our city. Independent contractor, for example, I mean, that, that could be anybody. City really.
No, I, I agree, uh, Mayor Protem. I think we're trying to, we're trying to solve, we're trying to help too many and some of those that are so small, they more than likely aren't going to make it through to begin with. They're going to have to reinvent themselves a different way. Um, if this is intended to keep businesses that were here operational, um, that would be the kind of thing I think that we are looking for. Um, in terms of these candidates, but I think we're going to make this so complicated where we're going to disqualify more than we're going to qualify. What, what do we need to do in moving this agenda item forward?
Mayor, if you'll allow me, I, again, I can reiterate some of what I've heard to be kind of the general themes and then maybe if, if it does fall in line with kind of what the council is saying, that uh, maybe there'd be a, a motion and a, and a second. Um, essentially to allow for sole proprietors to apply for the grant, to change the requirement from 12 months to six months. Um, to, that it does, and this gets to the lease portion, is that it does exclude home businesses. It does require you, as the criteria that currently states, that uh, you be in a commercial or an industrial space. Uh, lowering the grant amount from 75,000 to 5,000. And I believe that's kind of what I heard. Uh, if there's other items that I've missed, obviously, please.
What does that change the um, fee to? Cause if we lower the amounts, that means that we'll have more grants. So what does that shift our fee to?
Mike, if we move from, I think, what is it, 33 to 55?
Yeah, we charge, you know, just to kind of show you, you know, we, we charge about $75 an hour and we're charging two hours a month. You know, but that's based on these, you know, where they want tax returns. They want the lease. They want, you know, W nine, they want so many things. It takes a while to get all those things and then to fill it all out. Um, you know, let me, let me rework this and I'll give it to you later. Probably not a crazy amount, I mean.
I mean, if it's, it, it seems like it would be a 50% increase.
Makes about 11,500. Roughly. So now you're.
Okay. Um, I want to clarify on two issue here is, uh, did you want to do a priority ranking on the eligibility? Um, first up is nonessential businesses. And then if the um, grant, the amount is not filled, then we open it up to everybody, every other business. Do we want to proceed with that?
I would like to.
Okay. And then the second one here is uh, possibly no to a publicly funded business, publicly traded business.
That's like McDonald's.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you're, if your parent or your franchisor is publicly traded, we don't, you shouldn't be in this.
Okay, alright.
So you just need a motion now?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move as, as Ron described the change, move the item with the changes that Ron just articulated.
And check.
Mark, uh, Mark, did you second? Okay, thank you. Wendy, you a roll call vote?
And just to clarify, that was to approve the project with the changes listed by uh, City Manager Simmons and by Ron Douda, correct? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hasselbeck, seconded by Mayor Protem Turco. Do roll call. Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Turco?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbeck?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, now I know why those congressmen might give it away money so much. Feels good.
It does feel good.
Richard, I, Richard, sometimes you say yes and sometimes you say aye. I mean, we all follow your lead.
You know, I, I noticed, I noticed that on Zoom calls, a lot of people say yes, but I, in, in person, they always say aye. I, I don't know.
Hey guys, I need to jump off. Are we done or there's more stuff?
No, we're done.
Can I bring in one thing?
Thank you.
Just on the dispersal, you guys were talking about doing two dispersments. I think, you know, for $5,000, do you want them to have to come back for a $2,500 check or do you want to do one dispersment? At the end.
One dispersment.
Alright.
One is fine.
Yeah, one is fine.
Oh, there you are. Thought he hung up.
I would think the terms would be the same, 50% upon acceptance and the remaining 50% uh, 30 days later.
Yeah, but 5,000 isn't a lot. That's not going to, 2,500 isn't going to do much for these guys that are just trying to make a, a run so they can stay in their facility another month.
The full grant's 3,500, so.
Okay, I, I, I gotta go. So we, we can do whatever. Just. Yeah.
Bye, Shelley. Um, I, I would say we do the whole thing and minimizes administrative hassles and, and work and, and potentially cost as well, but I'll go with whatever the group thinks.
Well, I agree with Shelley and I now agree with Mark. That just on a one time, I know what it's like to be waiting on money. I can imagine what some of these, I listen when I'm out and I hear them and it, my heart goes out. Five grand, it's a lot, but it's not. So I would say just a really big smile on their face one time.
Yeah, I agree. So one payment, we got the lease four votes.
You waiting on me? That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Dean.
Thanks, Dean.
So that, that will allow us to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, see you all Monday.
Bye.
See you then.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.